I think we'll go ahead and get started. I've passed around the agenda for tonight, and it's super simple. Wanted to just review the draft superintendent search process document, which is the work that we started last week during our work session. And then I wanted to share with you the 2017 and 2019 salary comp documents that were put together for the district by Gallagher as part of a due diligence process that we went through that we likely will execute again as part of this search. I also wanted to share the draft RFP. Actually, this is not the draft. This is the 2012 RFP that was actually utilized for the search that the committee comprised of Kelly, no, Kim, Jenna, and myself will be reviewing and completing. And then I wanted to provide just a little bit of time for the outreach and engagement committee to provide any updates to determine if there were any other matters that we needed to review and discuss and then adjourn. So I don't anticipate that this is going to be long, but this, I think, is an important next step in making sure that we have clarity around how the search will proceed. So the proposed assumptions that we discussed last week and modified briefly. Procure professional executive search services. Review current superintendent salary and benefits package to ensure market competitiveness. Develop board search ground rules to guide individual and group conduct throughout the process. Design and implement board-led community engagement process to inform search. Develop search communication strategy, including web presence for use by candidates and public throughout the search process. Establish and adhere to search schedule and timeline. Consider a full range of candidates, including those that may need waivers to meet Iowa requirements. Maintain external legal services to inform board actions during the search process. And finally, adhere to all applicable provisions of the Iowa code in the conduct of the search. So those are the assumptions that we reviewed last week and made a few modifications to. But I would entertain any questions, comments, or changes so that we can finalize this and make it available for inclusion on the website once we are ready to launch our website for the search. Any questions or comments? Anything we've missed? Anything we'd like to change? Going once? Going twice? Okay. So the proposed ground rules. Individual board member actions or decisions have no standing in the superintendent search process. Only full board or committee actions affirmed by the full board will be recognized. During the superintendent search process, the board and its members shall limit board search committees to three individuals. That's an addition so that we ensure that we have the ability to move swiftly through some of the decision-making that we need to have at the committee level. Maintain confidentiality to include applicant candidate names and credentials and details regarding board deliberations. Adhere to the posting provisions of Iowa Open Meetings Law for board and committee meetings. Refrain from having conversations about applicants and candidates. Refer any applicant inquiries to search consultant or district search website. And then finally, review all media and related search questions to board share. So those are the ground rules that we discussed. And the one addition was sort of the preamble that speaks to the standing of individuals and individual board member actions relative to the process. And then, of course, just delineates how we will conduct ourselves while also maintaining the highest level of confidentiality. One of the clarifying points I wanted to make, however, is on number two where it says maintain confidentiality to include applicant candidate names and credentials. Once we get to a determination on the final candidates, whether that's two or three, those names will be public at that point. But up to that point, all names are to remain confidential until such time as we announce finalists, and those names will be public. Questions or comments on that?
My only question is, given the labor market or given the way the market is right now, are we open to a recommendation if our third-party search firm or a legal firm would recommend a different process?
Oh, I think we would be open to that if that's what they would recommend. But I think for now, we want to maintain the highest levels of confidentiality until we determine something different.
Yeah, and I meant, I think I was thinking in the opposite direction. Terry, for some reason, they recommended not making those names public.
Oh, when we get to the finalists? I think that that likely is a decision that we, as a board, would want to make. It feels like an entire process that is behind closed doors, and then we announce a candidate doesn't feel fully and completely transparent, in my opinion. But I would defer to the wishes of the board, but...
And I don't disagree. I just, I spoke with another community, and I just think it's worth having the conversation, given the nature of the job market right now, that some candidates are coming to the application process with wishes around confidentiality. And I just, I think transparency is always where we should err. I'm just, I don't think we have to...
I think it's important that we have clarity around the point at which names will be disclosed. And at that point, individuals can determine whether they want to participate in our process or not. I just personally believe that there is a level of public trust that we use when an entire selection and/or search process is closed and, you know, out of sight, out of mind. I just don't think that that builds the kind of confidence that you would hope.
So they'd be going into the process likely knowing that if they're a finalist, it's public?
Yeah.
And then making a choice accordingly?
Correct. Yeah. I don't know how others feel about that, but that just feels like sort of the right balance. Kelly, any comments on that?
No, I mean, I don't know that I've seen it done differently. I've seen, you know, superintendent searches where I've seen somebody's name multiple times in different districts being considered in final candidacy form. I just think that it makes sense that we would maintain that openness in that final process.
Kim?
I agree with that process.
Jenna, any comments?
Um, no. I mean, I guess I am not, I'm kind of new to the block, so I'm open and understand I'm a never say never kind of person. But that's where I stand, I guess.
Duwana?
I agree with that process.
Maria?
I agree as well. Anything else, Jackie?
No, I, transparency is very important. I was actually just wondering if the job market dictates...
Might dictate that, yeah. Yeah. So that's a question that I think we should broach with whoever our search consultant is. And if, for whatever reason, there is a sense that that broadens our candidate pool, then I think we'll have to determine if broadening the pool is worth the kind of risk we run when our process is not as open as we would hope. So I think that's a conversation for another day, but let's just make sure that we keep ourselves open to any recommendations, but then it will ultimately be our determination because it is our process. Okay?
I would like to propose an additional ground rule.
Yes.
One being that we have an identified liaison between the board and our search consultant, whether it be legal counsel or a search firm. So essentially identifying the person who speaks on behalf of the board, where we all can't be going to that firm or...
Okay.
Would that not be Terry? Or would we want to do someone else? Because that kind of feels like a lot, I mean, I don't know. Is that too much, Terry?
I don't think it's too much, but I think you raise a really valid point because it's really, I sort of view this process in the same way that, you know, we hire a superintendent. That person can't hear from seven different voices because there will not be clarity of purpose and process. So ensuring that there is a single point, and if individual board members have questions or concerns, those can be filtered through the chair, and then the chair can share those with the consultant. So I'll add, I'll add a ground rule there around contact with consultant. Okay? Thank you, Kim. Anything else? Okay. So the next really sort of delineates the search process activities followed by the process timeline. So we want to develop a search process schedule and timeline, develop a search RFP, identify potential respondents, and coordinate publication of RFP with district staff, the individuals responsible for doing that. Once the board approves the final RFP, our Terry, Kim, Duwana, no, Terry, Kim, and Jenna. It is, sorry. Yes, I will. And then the select, the search consultant, that will be a full board activity. Procure services of the independent consultant for the superintendent market study. That'll be board leadership and CFO, and I have a bit more to share on that. Design process for board-led community engagement and outreach, including questions for survey and face-to-face meeting. That's Jackie, Kelly, and Maria, and our coaches. And then finally, establish the outline format and content for the district search website. And that will be delegated to staff, but I actually have had a preliminary meeting with Phil to begin that process. So what I've taken us through in sort of the next timeline is taken the next, the fourth quarter of this year and the first three quarters of next year, and just grouped activities into those quarters. I'd like to make sure that we're in a position to issue the RFP, hopefully not later than the 15th, which keeps us on a pretty fast track. October and November will establish the search web presence and develop the search communications plan, as well as the committee that's responsible for outreach and engagement will move through their design and implementation phase. In December, a special meeting. Review the results of the community engagement outreach. Select our search consultant, approve the search contract, and then receive the results of the superintendent compensation market study. All of those need to happen so that when we go to publish, we have all of the information necessary so that the consultant can execute. Moving into Q1 '23, the remaining elements of the search process and timeline will be developed in conjunction with the search consultant or law firm, and they'll proceed with candidate screening. Into Q2, candidate screening will continue. We'll establish the schedule for preliminary interviews, finalist interviews, our overall selection and board approval announcement. And then the goal is to have someone ready to hit the ground running July 1, Q3 2023.
Could I ask a quick procedural question? With the RFP for the consultant, how long do you anticipate that process taking? How long will we keep it open for bid? And then for that selection to be secured?
Yeah, so that was one of the questions I was going to ask our procurement staff. I don't know enough about traditional timelines that the district has used, but whatever we traditionally use would likely be what we would use in this process, so. But I would imagine keeping it open for about 30 days would give us still enough time to do our review, to do our selection and/or interviews, and then finally, review and be prepared to execute the contract, so. But I'll get more information after I talk to the procurement staff.
Can the committee approve the RFP? Or does it have to run through the whole?
Yeah, so it'll come to the full board, and we may or may not have given ourselves enough time, but really just continuing to push. And we may need to adjust that. We likely will, but it feels like the greater the sense of urgency we give ourselves, the more quickly we get it done. So that may be a little ambitious. But what's today, the fourth?
We just, we don't have a meeting next week, right?
Yeah, I don't think we have to, I don't think, I don't think the board has to approve the RFP in formal session. I think we can develop the document, and we can double-check with Miriam, but I don't recall in the past that we actually did formal approval of the RFP before it went out. But we can double-check with Miriam on that.
Then it is possible.
It is, yeah. So with the addition of the ground rule regarding contact with the consultant, the adjustment of the names of the individuals that are on the RFP committee, and a potential adjustment on the date on the issuance of the search RFP. If we're comfortable with this document, I think we don't have to have formal approval. If by consensus, we can agree that this is the direction that we'll head, then I think that's a good place to start. And at least it gives us all a clear picture of not only the steps required and where each of us fit, but also our conduct throughout the process and our schedule for moving things forward. Everybody good with that? Okay, great. So I'm going to now pass out, and this is really more for information, less for discussion. But I wanted to just share with you the RFP that we used in 2012 for the superintendent search. It's pretty straightforward, and I was actually online looking at a few other examples. So there may be a few things that we choose to add and/or adjust in our 2012 document. But just know that this will sort of serve as the basis for the committee that has assigned the RFP development to begin its task. So again, very simply, submission requirements and deadlines, purpose of the RFP, scope of services, selection interview process, district contractor communications, and then contractor general conditions. I don't believe before that we limited the number of pages that the consultant submitted. Typically, these are, you know, pretty straightforward, so I don't know that that would be a requirement. But certainly, as the committee moves into not only reviewing this document, but perfecting it for our use and being prepared to issue it for board discussion and review, we'll likely do a bit deeper dive. So more information than anything just so that everyone knew the starting point for the RFP. Any questions?
I'm trying to remember in our conversation last week, did we talk about some items under scope of practice or scope of service that we said we would take in-house? Like the community outreach, we would not necessarily use a consulting firm for that. So I just, I don't know if that's a way that that gets worded in there, if we wanted to specifically identify, knowing that we want to take some of those pieces internally?
Yeah, so if I recall correctly, under scope of services, that's typically where a consultant sort of delineates the kind and type of things that they'll do. And I think if it's our intention to do sort of the community engagement internal, what we would do is delineate that that's not a function that we would ask the consultant to undertake on our behalf. But there may be other things that we want to make sure we include, but also those things that can be excluded when they're submitting their proposals, so. I also have a pretty robust list of search consultants and law firms that were provided by AJ and Cindy. So we'll likely utilize that list. I think it has about 43 or 44 national companies. And then we also will ask our procurement department if they have any other names. We also received at least one request of a company that wants to make sure that they are included on the list. And we'll also compare the list that we have from AJ and Cindy to the folks that responded to our RFP last time to make sure that they're included on the list as well. So I think we have a pretty good starting point for that. Any other questions or comments on the RFP? Again, knowing that this will be reviewed and vetted and fully fleshed out by the committee. But if you have any thoughts even after this meeting, feel free to reach out.
Terry, just real quick about that we need to vote for the RFP, and she said contracts for services are not ready to leave it by law, so it's up to the board.
Okay. I thought that was the case, but thanks for asking. Okay, so...
May I request that the RFP committee determine a date prior to leaving today for our review? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The next two documents that I'm going to send around are the results of total compensation studies that were completed by the district in 2017 and updated again in 2019. I share this really as a point of information, again, just so that the board has a sense of the kind and type of information that we likely will receive from the consultant based on the requests that we make. Gallagher is already working with the district on some salary studies for bands, I think, A through C. This would be a separate agreement with them to undertake this on behalf of the board. But I did have a chance to speak briefly with Shashank last week. And so I'm working with Kathy McKay to move forward with putting together a scope of work for this particular compensation study. And the purpose is twofold. Number one, to help us determine if our current salary range is competitive in the market based on what we know outside of Des Moines and also inside of Iowa, but certainly like-size districts and what the competition looks like. And then the second piece of this work will help to center us on what the hiring range is for the position. So we know that the salary range is from A to X, but the hiring range is somewhere in between A and X. And it will really give us a good sense of how low and/or how high we are willing to go in terms of securing someone for the superintendent's position.
For someone who hasn't been through it...
For someone who hasn't been through, we're clear about that in the, like, when we put out the job description we give. So people will know where our highest and our lows are.
Correct. So we'll give the full salary range, and we'll give likely the hiring range as well. So that will be in the advertisement that goes out. Okay? I know that I've thrown a lot of information at you, and I want you to, you know, at your leisure, spend time going through this. But these are all sort of processes and steps along the way that we need to ensure we're able to check the box on as we prepare to move forward with the search. So if, after you have done a deeper dive into any of these documents, and if you have questions, I have the benefit of having been around for both the 2017 and 2019 reports, and so I can probably share a little more information. But again, it's just an opportunity for us to make sure that as we move forward with the search that we have all of our ducks in a row and we have all of the information necessary to inform our process moving forward. So those are the key things I wanted to cover, and I'll now turn it over to Jackie for any update on the Outreach and Engagement Committee and their work.
So Kelly, Maria, and I are meeting tonight. We're all really excited to meet. And the, a couple of things I think we'd all say is that to, I want to make sure everybody looked at the timeline that Terry shared, and we'll be reviewing this timeline too, but it is going to mean kind of an all-in board mindset in October and November to accomplish all of the meetings that we like to accomplish. So I just want to ask everybody, I think we all know that, but just thinking about making sure that you've got some nights, weekends, and other times to help accomplish getting the input. I think we are going to meet and talk about our approach. I think an approach to keep this moving forward is that the committee will put together some recommendations. And at the same time, there is a matrix that AJ and Cindy provided that spurs some thinking around types of groups we should be seeking input from, who's got contacts, maybe even going so far as to ask for volunteers. But I think today, our task is to meet, identify how we want to proceed, the feedback that we want to get from board because we really need everybody's feedback, and then what we can give back to as quickly as possible so people can pick through it and talk about it and challenge it and push it to make sure it's good. Because ideally, we would be going into having public meetings starting the week of the 31st. And so for that to happen, there's several things that have to happen leading up to that. So I don't know, Kelly, Maria, if you want to add anything.
Are you guys still going to use surveys too? Okay, great.
Yep. I think the question is looking at your timeline, and this is a discussion question for our committee, is whether or not we want to try and announce a whole bunch of things at one time in a press release, and that's where there may be a little dissonance, and we might have to do two press releases. One is just saying that the public input process is going to be taking place. And then the second one is all about the process and how people can learn more about surveys, meetings, and things like that. That may be the best way.
Yeah. So the only, the only other thing I would offer is, I tied everything back to December 6th because that is our one and only meeting in December. That does not mean we couldn't do a special meeting that knocks out feedback on engagement, makes a determination about search consultant, and just gets all of that stuff done so we're ready to rock and roll in January. So I think we have a little bit of flexibility. But I was trying to maybe not have us have another meeting. But if we feel like it's important that we give ourselves a little extra time, then I think we should be happy to do that, so.
The only other thing that Duwana and I talked about, and this will be a discussion, I think, for Kelly and Maria too, was the second part of what was shared by the board coaches is the actual script of what is talked about at the meeting. And I think that'll be the, once we get the meetings set up, then I think talking about the script is going to be really important because there is, there might be some education around what does a superintendent do? How do we, how are we governed with goals and guardrails? And that wasn't necessarily specifically called out in the script. And so I think that'll be the second thing that we'll come back to is a conversation about the script and having a discussion about that. Kelly, Maria, anything?
No, I mean, I think that we're going to also want all of your inputs, so I think just be aware that emails will be coming to gather your insight into the outreach and the engagement efforts because everybody has their own connections with a variety of folks in the community, and we want to hear voices across the community. So we look for your input as well.
And I think if we're not meeting next week, that's the homework, that hopefully tomorrow we can send something out to the board and maybe ask for it to come back the following week in absence of a meeting so we can keep the process moving forward.
Jenna, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to lift up. I know we talked a lot about needing staff that are connected with our families and our communities to help to kind of spread the word about this. I mean, you talk about a press release, and I'm like, how far is that really going to go? So I think, you know, whether it's the community school coordinators and our bilingual family liaisons, and just thinking about those groups that can help push it to the forefront of our communication channels down to make sure that we get parents and voices at these. Are just, it's really important.
Yeah, I think that's, I think maybe a question for you, Duwana, or Terry, which is, in our retreat, there's a lot of discussion about this is board-led, board-conducted. But I think we all walked away realizing that we really do need the bilingual family liaisons. We need the SNAP access, the, you know, Connex access. We need community school coordinators, and we need Rosie's help. And so I'm not sure if that has to be talked to interim superintendent Smith about so he understands, so the staff understands. But that's probably, it's really important. I'm glad you called that up because we need that to execute it well.
If I could put forth, and maybe, I don't know if this is for you, Terry, or maybe Rosie, but is there a point person within the district that the committee... but is there a point person within the district that the committee can just, like, that's the person we can go to? We know that we need comms team, but we also know we need, you know, really that, the boots-on-the-ground team, so.
So my thought around that is that maybe once you're a bit more centered on sort of your path forward, then sitting down with Matt and trying to identify district resources, both staff and interpreters that can support the work and how best to align with them in a way that makes your process seamless, takes a little bit of the edge off the board having to do everything, but really leans into folks that have the skillset, capacity, and depth and connections to make it happen.
Trust, yeah, and the trust. And I just want to mention something with, that you have lifted up is, we're not only doing community engagement. It is both community engagement and outreach. And so it's not just us going to be having meetings and inviting people to come to them. We are actually going to be going to locations and existing meetings where we will go to you, so. And I think that that outreach piece is critical. So as we're highlighting the places that we think are going to make the most impact, particularly in, you know, our, our most underrepresented families and, and community members. That'll be important.
As the committee meets, I'm just throwing out there, going back to being a part of those community conversations when we did the ACES, that we, we did provide food. I don't know if we're thinking about, you know, making sure, what does that kind of feel like? And, I don't know, making sure that it's worth everyone's time. Of course, that it's effective, but also making sure that we have refreshments and it's in a good location and all of those questions that I don't know the answers to.
I, I do have one question, and I was going to ask Kelly this in the committee meeting too. But from a sense of calibrating how much feedback, you know, it's, it's a really interesting question because there's quality and quantity. Is, are there any past experiences or any preset expectations that people at the board table have about the right amount of feedback? And I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Maybe when we sit down and we start bucketizing things, we'll get closer to a number. But I, I think if anybody has some preconceived expectations or notions about quantity or quality, obviously quality, quantity, that'd be helpful.
That would be really helpful. I think that we, I mean, if we're talking about trying to be inclusive, right? And reach everyone, I think it's worth a conversation, you know, to talk about, you know, is there a certain percentage that we're kind of leaning toward? What information is, or how much information is enough for adequate for us to be able to make decisions on as a district?
Per my quick Google, it's 10% is an accurate sample size. But you can cut that a lot of different ways, like making sure it's not all, yeah, which, which schools, which parents, which.
80%, so it's not like.
Correct, yeah. Multiple avenues and understanding we will never have 100%. But what, what is it that is, that we think is representative? That we are comfortable in making decisions moving forward? And I, and I also, I think it's, it's a valid question. What is the number, right? So if we go into a space and there are two people, and there are two of us, like, it's, it'll be a very in-depth conversation. It'd probably be informative. But, you know, there's also seven of us. And so we all have to commit and, and be available to do it. And if we don't have people who can take this date and time, that cannot be a session that we can host. And so I think we really have to be able to hone in where, you know, how are we going to do this in a meaningful way that we feel that we can do it within the seven of us?
I was just going to offer that I think history shares with us in all of the survey work that we do as a district. Typically, white English-speaking folks are the ones that are going to respond to the online survey. Our other demographic communities, non-English-speaking, individuals of color, underrepresented populations are the ones that we struggle to reach. So it feels like trying to strike the right balance about, you know, how many you identify for individual outreach engagement sessions, to me, is a bit more heavily weighted towards the marginalized, non-English-speaking, et cetera. Because I think you're always going to get the other folks showing up. It doesn't mean that we don't do outreach and specific meetings. But I think our data shares with us every time we do a survey that it's, it's sort of the usual suspects. And the folks that we really want to hear from are the ones that we don't. So maybe just sort of utilizing our own litmus test to really figure out what the balance is, to me, makes sense.
And I think that's going to be key when we talk about going to them, going to the people. That's going to be very key as we're moving forward with that, knowing that if that's what history tells us, then we're going to have to be really mindful of making sure that we're going out to populations and places that we know of or we're familiar with or we can find out about because we're going to need to go to them. I think that's going to be critical for that.
Can I just ask a quick timing question? Are you envisioning a survey going out, like, at the same time as you're doing listening sessions? Or do you see a survey and then filling in the gaps with listening sessions? Now you see like a two, okay. And are you going to ask in the survey, like, specific about if you're a parent? Like, what school, like, how are we? I'm sure you're going to drill down on how you're going to know who you're getting responses from so that we can figure out who we need to also go ask.
And I think part of this is really, our approach was, at least my approach, and hopefully we're all on the same page, is we're going to do our best thinking and then come back to the team to, to push and poke holes and look at things through different lenses, just to kind of accelerate, you know, accelerate things by putting a starting point together.
And I guess I have a clarifying question because Jenna, how I hear you talk, and maybe this is my interpretation of it. You're thinking, well, we'll keep going and then we'll just keep going and going. And if we don't have this voice, we'll keep going. But I, and I, I want to be cautious to make sure that we know what our endpoint is and be, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want community sessions to be open and open and open. But knowing that, like, here are our sessions. Like, my hope is we have the plan, here's what we have, we have everything available. We will be doing outreach and engagement and surveys. We hope that we can draw you into one of those, but we're not going to go out and create and go, oh, gosh, but we didn't, something. And now we need to go there and start adding to that list?
No, but I think if we ask the right questions upfront and we can get our data in a timely manner, we can have time to course correct. So like, if we're, if you go to a school and you're seeing only two families there, maybe you could say, hey, can you, principal, can you push this out and talk to your parents about participating in the survey? We didn't get a lot of participation. I'm just trying to think about opportunities to course correct along the way if we're aware of kind of what's coming in on the survey. Fine, we've got those voices. If we're not seeing it in these sessions as we initially planned, making sure that we kind of are just aware of what voices we get so we don't get to the end and be like, oh, we didn't, you know, it didn't really work out the way we wanted it to.
Hopefully, fingers crossed, have to come into a course correct as, as to how you described.
Yeah, and I think, I'm just kind of reflecting on our survey, the survey to everyone around the calendar and how confusing that was to know, is that a parent voice? Is that a teacher voice? Is that a community voice? And just so as we think about building a survey and maybe learning from some of those mistakes of the voices we missed or getting the data and not being able to really drill down on who is represented in it, so.
I think, I, I think it'll be really important for us to consider doing things not the way that we've historically done them. And I think that our job as a committee is to make sure that history does not repeat itself. And that's why we're here. So, you know, when we talk about survey, I hear the word continuously, "survey." A lot of families might not really even, you know, know how to define a survey. And that might be a complete turnoff. If you don't know what people are talking about, you don't want to have anything to do with it. So people are going to shut down and people are not going to participate. So just thinking about the wording and how we present ourselves to individuals will be really, really important. So I, I'm just, I'm listening and my wheels are turning. And I'm getting really excited.
I also am going to go back to something you said about, like, if we're not getting voices thinking outside the box around. Teri, I remember when you were running and you just ran, went to the car lines to get signatures for your petition. Like, that's a great idea, right? Like, to jump out and go to a school and just stand in the car line and, you know, try to grab information or encourage people to do a survey. I think.
Invite people to meetings.
We, we may have to just think out, I think, just a willingness to build cushions so we can think outside the box if the voices are really important. It's kind of where I guess I'm going.
Yeah. I want to, I want to really emphasize, though, that while this is a board task, it's not 100% board work. And we should really lean on folks who have those relationships to help open doors and to create those opportunities that, independent of them, we would not be able to create on our own. So lean on those folks as a way to really build the capacity to ensure we're not missing folks and that we are capturing the representative groups in the district that typically are not engaged this way.
Does that mean that we're open to less traditional practices? And by that, I mean, I think about something you just said, Dwan, but in my head, if we can command 15 minutes of an agenda on the existing meeting, is that, is that good enough, right? Where we can, so it may look a little different than your typical one-hour meeting. It may be, we have three questions we want to take you through. Because that, I think that's a quicker way to get feedback into communities that we don't necessarily have tentacles in, is, okay, there's a meeting, there's a group coming together. Can we get feedback in, in that type of way? So I just think even maybe thinking about different approaches, that they all don't have to just be formal meetings just for the sole purpose of talking about the superintendent.
What I'm observing right now is really exciting and inspiring because we're all really passionate about, about attracting, you know, getting the correct information from our families and really hearing the voices and, and making sure that this process is done with fidelity. But I also think that we need to honor the committees that have been put in place and trust the committees that have been put in place because we're kind of going into a committee of the whole where we need to trust the individuals that the chair has assigned to this committee, make a recommendation to the board of a whole, as a whole, and then have conversation around the, the recommendation that, that you as a committee feel is what's best for the district. So, because I, I just envision what's going to happen. There's, these are not the only two committees that we will have throughout this process. We're going to have a rubric writing committee and a, you know, a scoring committee. All these things are going to happen and, and we've got to, got to trust our colleagues.
Absolutely. Well, and I think the other piece of that is feeling confident that, you know, many hands make light work. And so we all don't have to say yes to everything, but let's say yes to the things that we either believe in and really are interested in supporting, leaving other things to other folks because it may just not be something that trips your trigger too. So, okay. Anything else? Those were the things that I wanted to cover tonight. I'll make sure that we get the revisions to the revised draft done. And then there are a few additional steps that we'll be moving forward with. But before we leave tonight, Kim, Jenna, and I will set a time for the RFP review. And I know the other committee is meeting.
So just so I'm clear, do we have to receive a formal approval from the board accepting our recommendations? And if so, since we don't have a meet, if so, we don't have a meeting next week, so that would be the week of the 17th, the 18th, the meeting on the 18th?
Yeah.
Are you asking if we need a formal approval of the recommended?
Of the committee recommendations for engagement and outreach.
When you say formal, it doesn't have to be anything that we vote on in open session. It can be a consensus position on what you advance for design and implementation.
Great.
Perfect. All right, those are all the things I wanted to cover. Thanks, everyone.